To adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. Dr. Bonebrake offers a second, any discussion? Ms. Lister, ready to vote? Next is school highlights, Dr. Anderson.
This is one of our most exciting times of the board meeting, or at least the part that I love, celebrating students and staff. And so with that, we want to first start off and ask Reverend Williams, did you want to join me for this one, for the very first award on the Living the Dream Food Drive winner? And so I will defer to Reverend Williams, who is part of the Living the Dream Committee. And the Living the Dream Committee celebrated not only Martin Luther King, but also service and giving. And so as part of the Living the Dream experiences, food was collected throughout Topeka Public Schools, which went to support many pantries and other organizations. And I'll turn it over to Reverend Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Happy Monday, I mean happy Thursday. The annual, it's actually a joint venture of TPS and Living the Dream Incorporated. Food Drive is the brainchild of Dr. Harry Johnson, who's a retired TPS educator and administrator. She came up with this idea that three years ago, she was contacted by the advisors to international students at Washburn, and the food pantry out there was bare, and the kids were having faced those difficult decisions, whether to buy school materials or to eat. And so we came up with this idea of collaborating with TPS and have a food drive during MLK Week. This year, we had about 3,100 food items that were collected, and Quincy Elementary collected the most items. So at this time, on behalf of Living the Dream Incorporated, as well as TPS, I would like to present Quincy Elementary with this small token of our appreciation and gratitude and recognition of their efforts toward that end. And also, we have a certificate. So is there a...
Principal Sarnberger?
Yes.
And any student that is with you that you'd like to bring on up?
Appreciate your efforts.
That is it. Taking a picture momentarily, wait about five minutes, okay?
All right. And we ask for each award recipient to stay for about five minutes so we can get a photo with the board. We are so excited, it is T-CALP night. CTE is our proclamation of the month, and with that, many celebrations. And so without further ado, we have our distinguished administrator, Dr. Morell, who since he has been here, many new programs, courses, and opportunities have opened up for us. Dr. Morell, will you please come forward? And we have several awards, but we also have the proclamation. They will start off with the awards and then go to the proclamation. So I'll turn it over to you about both of those.
So this year, we were pleased to learn that one of our instructors, as well as one of our students, received an award. And so without further ado, let me introduce Mrs. Anne Hegeman. She received the award for the 2020 Western Missouri and Kansas Affiliate Aspirations and Computing Award for Educator.
Can you share a little bit about that award? Mrs. is the first one, and Mrs. Hegeman? We all always love hearing you, since she taught most of the people probably in this room.
That just means I'm old. This award is a really cool thing for me, because I've been championing the females of my classes for a number of years now. And I feel like if I can do it, and I'm just an average person, that tons of other girls can do it, who are much smarter than me. Typically, society says that guys can only, are the only ones who can do computers. But as Scott knows, and other parents know, I've been trying to get the girls involved for lots and lots of years for a number of ways. I can think of lots of activities we've had over the years that have championed the girls in this technology field. So it's pretty cool to me that I get this award, because I feel like I really have tried to make the girls, you know, highlight the girls and their specialties in this area, and how they can excel just as well as the guys can. And so it's really, it's really exciting for me, and I thank you very much.
And how many years have you been in public schools?
Longer than all of you have been along. This is, I'm finishing my 39th year in Topeka Public Schools.
And along with Ms. Hegeman, one of her students, Daylen Hughes, Daylen, if you'd stand up, please. She won the award from the same group for the Rising Star, for Women in Information Technology. I think should be noted also that this is the fifth year, is that correct? That one of Mrs. Hegeman's students has won this award.
Hi. I'm hoping that this award will help other females realize that they're able to do stuff on computers as well, and not just the guys. And it's extraordinary.
And what grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
And where do you go from?
Washburn University.
What are you going to study?
Computers.
Good answer.
Thank you.
So this is National Career and Technical Education Month, February. And so I have some students here from T-CALP who are going to read the proclamation. So these students are special students this month in particular, because they won first-place awards in the Educators Rising competition, two of them did. Harley Sowers, so Harley, would you come up, please? And Morgan Coon, come on up. And Garrett Jones is within our Engineering and Applied Math program, is going to read as well.
Whereas February...
No, no. Not that easy, Garrett. So you'll start out.
And if there's some videotaping from T-CALP as well, that...
Ready? All right. Whereas February 1st to the 29th, 2020, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association of Forward Career and Technical Education. And whereas Career and Technical Education offers students opportunities for academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for the true career readiness, and...
Whereas students in Career and Technical Education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase student engagement and achievement. And whereas Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experiences, which enable them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as pursuit of establishment programs of study, career pathways, and...
Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, information technology, and whereas Career and Technical Education prepares students for these and others fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials, and...
Whereas ensuring that employers have access to qualified workforce is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued American economic growth and global competitiveness, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of United School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim February 2020 as National Career and Technical Education Month.
Can I ask where the three of you are going to college, or what career you're going into? And we'll start off with you, sir.
I...
And someone else?
Second time, sorry. I'm thinking of going to Allen Community College first to get Gen X stuff out of the way, and then either Washburn or Case State for Computer Science or Engineering.
I'm probably going to go to Fort Hays University, study special ed elementary education.
I'm going to Washburn University to major in elementary education.
So with me this evening is Chief Bailey, who is our instructor for Fire and Emergency Management. I'd like the chief to come up and talk a little bit about T-CALP.
Are there other CTE members or T-CALP members that...
Staff here.
...stand or staff that's in the audience to be acknowledged?
Mrs. Eubank, you want to stand up, please? She's the instructor for Engineering and Applied Math, and I think the other one is Ms. Hegeman.
And then you have a student that, can you show us his building for us?
So Ms. Hegeman has a roomful of students, it seems like, tonight. But anyway, we have Marcus Rodriguez. Marcus, would you raise your hand, please? And then in the back, we have Perjean James, who's, they are both starting out filming with the equipment that was donated to T-CALP by Lucky Eight TV Productions. So we're very pleased to have that, have that opportunity.
Well, good evening. First of all, I have to say, I'm almost afraid to say anything after the staff that have represented T-CALP already. That is the epitome of what T-CALP is, what you see, what you've seen tonight. It's an opportunity for students to have hands-on experience, it's not the traditional classroom setting. Students are up out of their seats, engaged, and they're preparing themselves for the future. As instructors, we try to spend right around, in the two hours and 20-minute time span, we probably will spend about 20 minutes or less in front of the students in the lecturing or discussion phase. Most of the time that they spend, they spend with hands-on, applying practical applications to the content that we've learned in class. My pathway, for example, is the Emergency and Fire Science Pathway. So we learn out of the Essentials book, which is the exact same learning tool that firefighters in the city of Topeka and surrounding communities learn out of. And during the course of our learning, our students during the first year, they learn to merit their gear. And they merit their gear by discussing and challenging one another to share content about what they've learned thus far during the course of the year. Their gear consists of their helmets, their gloves, the firefighter turnout coat, the firefighter boots, the firefighter suspenders, gloves, et cetera, et cetera. That transformation of seeing that student put on that gear to that hero that puts on that gear, all I can do is get out of their way. I deliberately allow them to walk down the corridors and let their friends see them. And then they're engaged, they're prepared, they're ready to learn. We do drills, we actually do fire drills. So the dress set, T-CALP is 500 Tougher Caloog Drive. So while we're discussing, just like we're doing right now, I might say, Fire alarm, 500 Tougher Caloog Drive. And we have about four scenarios that the students will get up, get on their, put on their turnout gear as quickly as they can, then go to the door, line up in their appropriate positions, put on their seatbelts, wait for the door to open completely, go out, and then they proceed with whatever the drill is that they're doing. So that's just one lesson of minute. I was told three minutes, Dr. Morell is really close to me, and I want to share this with you, so I'll hear any questions.
We also have some students, they all do amazing things in the classroom every day. But in particular, Garrett Jones has been working on a project for a while now that I'd like him to share with you. So Garrett, while you're talking, I'll get your board back here, and we can let folks know what's going on.
So one of the projects, or, sorry. Hi, my name's Garrett Jones. I'm a senior at Topeka West High School, and I'm a second year at T-CALP in the Engineering and Applied Mathematics Pathway. So one of the projects that I've been working on this year is creating a process that can. I did not personally create it. A company by the name of E-Enable, a nonprofit organization, that allows volunteers to create and print these out for those who need it, and sends them to those who need it. This is, for the most part, actually printed with a 3D printer. The only things that are not are screws, string, rubber bands, finger covers, and straps. Process that it took for me to be able to create this was first assembling the fingers. Each of them have connection pieces that I printed. Going to have to look at it, so. Each of them had connection pieces that I had to print. I then attached rubber bands to each of them to allow them to hold together, because once these strings are pulled, they are pulled inward. Rubber bands allow them to be pulled back to their original position. I then attached the fingers to the palm with the same method, with the, at the joints having connection pieces and rubber bands. I then strung the fingers through and tied them off at the ends of the fingers. I connected all of them to this back box to then hold the strings together as these two fingers. And these two fingers are attached together. I finally then, this piece at the back, which is an arm guard, is, it was originally printed flat, but then I had to place it in boiling water to bend it. And once I did that, I was then able to attach it to the back end of the palm. Afterwards, I attached the box, something to hold the box in, wrist straps. And then from then on, I continued working on it until it actually worked correctly with the strings. And wherever it is at this point, you can go on ahead and, you could go on ahead and bend the two pieces together to see it working. I'll show a demonstration in a second, I guess. The skills that I used during this process were time management, which allowed me to keep working on specific tasks for a certain amount of time, not too long, not too short, and be able to work on things that I needed to. In the process, I used a Gantt chart, which is something more of a spreadsheet, to allow me to actually know what I should be working on, when I think I'm starting that task, when I think I'm going to end it. And if I need to, I can adjust it at any point. I used research skills to research the company themselves, to research the project and the product itself, and what I'd be making, and the ability, and the instructions and such of how to make it, and what I needed to do to actually use it. So as a bit of a demonstration, this is meant for someone that does not have fingers, but still has a palm. They place their hand in here with their wrist straps covering their wrist, and then they would just bend their arm. You'd then be able to grab whatever you could. The grips that I used, they are working well, but at the same time, they can be problematic. So it's not the greatest endeavor. But this was a very great project. I was really lucky to be able to work on this. And Ms. Eubank, my teacher actually paid for the kit, for me to be able to work on it.
That's just one of the things that happens at T-CALP. And of course, throughout the district, with our current technical education programs, a lot of good things are happening. On the screen, you can see that the number of pathways that we have now are 18. The teachers that we have throughout the district, the number of teachers that we have at T-CALP, our current enrollment. And next year, our pre-enrollment number is 187 so far, and that's without all of the schools having gone through pre-enrollment. We're hoping that those numbers hold and that those students do come to T-CALP. We're ready for them. This year, we had a mentor program for all of our seniors, with a lot of the people in this room serving as mentors. And we really appreciate that. We're hoping that that number really goes up for next year. Every pathway has to have an advisory board, which helps us in terms of ensuring that we're teaching the right things, that we're meeting the needs of industry. So we have 15 of those. And business and industry partners that aren't serving on those advisory boards are 176. So a lot of people throughout the community and the area are helping us to do what we need to do to make sure that our students are successful and ready for college and careers. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have questions for your students. The first student with the hand. Yeah. Are you going to take this further? I mean, you're going to graduate. What kind of pathway are you looking at?
I was planning to take this a little further. I am currently getting certification for the hand to be provided for those that need it. That was actually part of my task by Ms. Eubank. But in terms of my future, I'm focusing more on software than hardware. I'm thinking more of working on software engineering, computer science.
Very good. So you feel like T-CALP has laid a groundwork for you to go into what you want to do?
Yeah. The hand is a second-year sort of project. Last year, we actually worked on designing programs for robots. That was more specifically toned to what I'm thinking of doing. And that's what actually really helped me last year. And now, first-year students, I'm actually able to help with their own assignments, which are the same as what I went through. So it's really getting me focused on what I'm thinking of doing, and it really helps.
So the other question is amongst your students, we didn't have you introduce parents or people that came with you. So we might just do that if they, if they would like to do that.
T-CALP parents, if you'd please stand up. Ms. Lister, do we have any advisory board members here tonight? I want to acknowledge too, before I sit down, also Morgan Coon and Harley Sowers. If you'd stand up again, these ladies are going to be going to represent us in Washington DC. And we hope that when they come back from Washington, they'll have another first-place finish, and they'll be able to speak to us at a meeting. So thank you.
Dr. Morell, was there an open house scheduled? Did I see that scheduled in a month or so, April?
We don't have an open house, but we are going to have... Right, we'll have an advisory board night coming up, I believe it's March 24th, and that's open. And we'll also have one later in the year, what we did last year, where everybody came in to see the projects the students are working on.
I'm certainly pleased Ms. Hegeman was honored tonight. She taught my daughter, who was a Topeka High School graduate, 2013, several years of computer stuff. So one of her favorite teachers of all time, so it's nice to be able to honor this.
We're preparing to take a few minutes, I'm writing about five minutes. For our teacher candidates, have you already interviewed Topeka Public Schools and gotten an intent to hire?
Not yet.
Oh, we'll take care of that tonight, okay. So then we'll start. Then we'll get ahead and take care of that part while you're here. So we are excited about that. So we're going to go ahead and have five minutes for both, four members coming up. T-CALP team members, CTE, staff and other CTE team members, I'll come on up. So all of our instructors and students, come on up. And you guys just stand right here, students, right where I'm at. I'm going to move out of the way. All right. You guys just keep standing right there, settle. And then we'll work our way around you. So you are going to be there this afternoon? So the money, what time do you get to T-CALP?
Well, we went, you guys have the...
So you're going to be in 5:00 at T-CALP, how about that? And we also have contracts, points early. Do you know that? I'm going to look this way, everybody? All right. One, two, three. Don't we want young people who are on the film?
Yeah, we have some of them in here, too.
Come on, young people, are you T-CALP students? Wait a minute, we forgot two students. One on one end and one on the other for balance? Okay, three, two, one. Thank you. What members do you stay? Ms. Sarnberger and our scholar, our Quincy scholar, 9:11 late, but you're going, okay? I think she must sit better than I do.
Dr. Teresa, sounds good. Have one of those in front of you.
All right, watch your step, banana.
Mr. President?
Got our certificate?
May I make a comment to the new board members?
Sure.
T-CALP arose when the three of us were just beginning on board. I had the, the... I went to Blue Valley to see the Cats Road in Blue Valley. And I saw kids who were very, very excited. I saw kids who were doing things like the hand. They were doing water things. And at that time, we knew we had to do something like this. It has taken a while to get it started, but the numbers looked really good, I think. So congratulations to the administration for their vision.
Ms. Wallace just told me we had three strands that are, that have weightless. One of them is the engineering, which she teaches, the ag science that we just started. And sports medicine has a weightless. Next on the agenda is photo comics. We don't have any, is that right? So we'll move on to disposition of business by consent, entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board to approve items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project of purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Reverend Williams offers a motion. Do we have a second? Dr. Morrison has a second. Any discussion? Seem none? Or ready to vote? Our honor's, let's turn it up. Next on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
At this time, we welcome and invite Ms. Crowe. It's always a delight to have her annually to tell us about the exciting legislative action that she has been involved in. I'll turn it over to Ms. Crowe.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Crowe, I'm the contract lobbyist for the district. I've been with the district for about eight years. Welcome.
Most at-risk practices approved by the State Board of Education don't target at-risk students and were not clearly evidence-based. So districts are having to spend more on at-risk programs than state funding covers, which was a good component of the audit, because it pointed out that, I think, of the schools that contributed to the audit, Topeka spent more in general fund dollars than they got state dollars as opposed to any other district. Due to the report, legislators are making efforts to reform how at-risk funding is allocated. The legislature wants to know what you're doing to measure your programs locally. So what you need to document, how you use at-risk funds, how you determine the programs, how you work with the State Board, and what you do internally to determine how the dollars are justified by best practices for the students that you're serving. And that is a key piece, because what they're looking at is, in regard to best practices, is what the State Board approves as far as the programs that you're allowed to use for at-risk funding. So next, House Bill 2540. This is the bill that there are a bunch of changes made to just a few minutes ago. It requires districts to transfer any state foundation aid that's directly attributable to the at-risk student waiting and high-density at-risk student waiting. It also specifies that money from state at-risk funding can only be spent on programs and services included in a list approved by the State Board of Education. Now, that was just amended to say that current programs are provisional, and it gives the districts one year to get approval by the State Board. So you're still allowed to use the programs that you're using now. You would just have to get approval from the State Board within a year. It also adds to current reporting requirements by including the number of students served or provided assistance under each program and specific academic performance progress achieved through each program provided. That was also amended, so instead of the programs and the number of students and the specific academic performance progress, it was amended so that it compares academic progress of students in the program to all other students. And then also said that you're to measure attendance, state assessments, graduation rate, and average ACT score. Now, the big thing that happened with House Bill 2540 today was that they amended in the high-risk, high-density at-risk and extended the sunset to 2025. So that matches the next bill I'm going to talk about with Senate Bill 271. That's the number-one issue for the district. So this would extend the high-density at-risk for five more years. Now, on to Senate Bill 271. This is a bill that is specifically about the high-density at-risk sunset. This bill had an amendment that extends the sunset for three years, and in the last bill, 2540, that bill now says that the sunset would be extended for five years. More amendments are expected on this bill. Several senators suggest that other accountability measures for the use of at-risk funds should be included in the bill, and that brings us back to 2540, and at some point, these ideas are all going to be married together. This is a $4 million impact on Topeka Public Schools for the high-density at-risk. And I can assure you that is going to be handled. At this point, it's a question of whether it's a five-year extension or a three-year extension, and that's something that will probably be resolved in conference. The House will pass its version of the bill, the Senate will pass its version of the bill, they'll come together in conference, and then they will hash out what the bill looks like and send that one version to both the House and to the Senate. The Mental Health Intervention Team Program Pilot, MHIP, is a program that we've had for, I think, two years. There are a couple of changes that are being proposed for this pilot, and the governor's budget has a provision that would turn this into a competitive grant program and take it out of the pilot status and put it into an embedded program. We testified on House Bill 2582, and our position was that we prefer the governor's version of the program over House Bill 2582. The problems with 2582, I guess first I should say, the priorities in 2582 would be first, students in the custody of DCF, then a focus on students receiving family preservation services, and then all of the students. What this, what House Bill 2582 does is reduce school funding and raise the match for the school districts and lessen the match on the state aid. It also reduces community mental health dollars that fund under uninsured student care. So the impact on Topeka is that 2020 liaison salaries, state aid, are at 424, 441. That's 75% of 2019 funding. The CMHC is fully funded by state aid at $208,000. The 2021 liaison salaries would be cut another 25% beyond what was cut in 2019, so the program funding would be 50% of the state aid and 50% district match. And as I said, the governor's proposed budget, House Bill 2597, expands the pilots to new districts as well as continues the funding for our district and increases the funding for participating districts. There was an amendment to this bill today also. They worked, I think, five or six bills today, and actually during a voucher bill, stopped halfway through and are coming back on Monday to continue working that bill. The amendment that was made to the budget concerns 2582. So the amendment says that it would continue the pilot as-is, strike the governor's budget language with the competitive grant program, and then implement a $3 to $1 state-to-district match, which is 75% to 25%. That is contingent upon 2582 passing. So if 2582 doesn't pass, the pilot will be continued, it'll be a three-to-one share, and it would strike the governor's budget language. And that's all, that's what I have. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Do we have any questions for Ms. Crowe?
So, House Bill 2582, what's the bottom line of that? I mean, are we... We obviously have benefited from mental health intervention, and the funding for that, are we getting, I mean, does this say we're getting cut?
This would implement a weighting, which is what the...
Three-to-one.
Which is what, it would actually be 50/50. So we'd go from a 75/25 to a 50/50. The amendment takes us back to a 75/25. But under 2582, we would be at a 50/50 match. So 2019, we lost 25%, and 2020, we would lose 25%. And it would implement a weighting that would apply to all districts. Now, the fiscal note on that is going to be huge. Department of Education has not yet put in a fiscal note, so it would have to be a huge amount of money. I think this is really more of a conceptual bill as opposed to an actual proposal, given the price tag that they would have on such a weighting.
How do the school districts educate the legislature on their assessments? It seems like all governmental actions, there's more programs and responsibilities than less pay.
Right, and that's one reason I'm there. I coordinate with all of the other school lobbyists as well as with KASB USA, and so all of us do a collective lobbying effort and education efforts. I think one thing that you can do is contact your legislators. We have a very good legislative delegation, so they tend to be in step with supporting the district, but it always helps to give them encouragement. Brenda Dietrich sits on the House K-12 Budget Committee. She's always been a supporter of public education. One person I might suggest is Senator Eric Rucker. He sits on the Senate Education Committee. He might be someone that you might reach out to and talk about the issues and needs of the district.
I do have one more question. I got an email from a group that was advocating for mandatory vaccination.
Okay.
Did you sit in on any of that, or the hearing?
I have been following it. This would have the legislature approving vaccinations, and the list of vaccinations is included in the bill, and it would take the authority away from KDHE to put them into rules and regs. It's another one of those where it has this, like, year window where KDHE can still put vaccinations into rule and reg, but once the legislature goes into session, they would have to put into statute any new vaccination and add it to the list that would be in the law as opposed to being in rules and reg.
So, for your knowledge, the new vaccination was meningococcal, so meningitis, and then...
Mucoccal?
No, I think it was pneumonia. Can't remember. So, yeah, Kansas has, and for our knowledge, Kansas has just a terrible record of especially HPV vaccination. So it may be something that we, in our legislative platform, want to bring to our legislators at another time.
That bill is in the Education Committee and has not been blessed. A bill has to be blessed if it's not in an exempt committee, which would be Judiciary, Fed and State Affairs, or Appropriations. So unless that bill is blessed next week, it would die.
I think it's going to its death this year.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
No pun intended.
As well as some of the kids that don't get vaccinated.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe, for being here for this legislative update. So if one were to contact Senator Rucker, can you offer some language that we, one could use in talking to them?
Extend high-density at-risk. And that would be support Senate Bill 271.
Extend high-density at-risk.
Senate Bill 271.
Under HB 2582, students receiving family preservation services?
That is a program that's run out of the Department of Children and Families. It's a competitively bid program, and it's mostly child welfare contractors in the state, mostly subcontractors, and they provide social work-type services to support families. They go into homes to preserve the family.
Social workers visiting. Okay.
One question, or a couple of questions I had, Ms. Crowe. Is there any discussion about the definition of at-risk? Or is it still kind of...
It's mostly the student or program argument. Are we funding, and teachers, are we funding programs and teachers? Or the LPA seems to say that we should be directly funding students. So kind of a dollar follows the child type of approach.
How do they just, how do they... I sort of get both philosophically their concepts, but how do they expect us to say we're going to hire a teacher that's going to help, or a parent that's going to help these at-risk students, but they're in a classroom with 20 kids and 15 of them are at-risk? You just teach the 15?
Right.
What do they envision...
And that's what we're doing.
Implementation of that.
That's what we're doing to educate, that this is, to use an old word, a mainstreaming type of approach, that you have at-risk kids sitting with kids that are not at-risk, and it's the teacher that the money needs to follow. And it benefits all the students in the class.
Right.
And I think what they're going to find is that they're going to spin their wheels and not be able to find another way to implement at-risk funding. I mean, it's lost on me. I don't, and I think what they are trying to do is look to the education community to provide ideas, and I mean, we don't have any ideas other than how we do it now.
Right. I would agree that I'm struggling to figure out how you implement something that, and at-risk is so defined right now based on income levels when...
Right. And that's to dispute also.
Poor kids have issues, you know what I mean?
That's to dispute also. Should it be based on free and reduced lunch? These are the conversations we've had year after year, where they're saying free and reduced lunch kids aren't necessarily at-risk.
Right.
And they spin the wheels trying to find different ways to define what an at-risk child is, and then we end up at the end of the session and there are no developments. So, and maybe this is just because we don't have school finance and Gannon to talk about this year, so we've got to have something else to talk about. I don't know.
Thank goodness for that, yes.
Yes. That's one thing about my eight years being with the district, it's been eight years of school finance, and this is a relief this year to not have that hanging over the legislator's head.
Any other questions? Dr. Wonberg, Gavin?
What about the $10 million that is expected to come from the school districts to pay for dual credits for college and high school?
It's a, you mean the dual enrollment?
Right.
That, and Senate Bill 335, I don't believe there is a price tag on that. I think it's...
It's in the newspaper.
Essentially what school's already doing. I think the $10 million has to do with a voucher program, and I call it a voucher program because it is the essence of a voucher program. It's capped at $10 million, and it takes base state aid and lets the parent use that base state aid kind of in a check or a gift card and take that and spend it at a private, a non-public school. Or, I think it was 0.484 of the base state aid per pupil if they choose to stay, and that's capped at $10 million. And then the other part of that is if they choose to stay in the public school, they take a percentage of that base state aid per pupil, and that money can be used for other programs, other educational programs to complement their public school education.
Like dual credit?
Yeah. That's probably, yeah. That was the bill they were actually debating when they shut down the committee today. Dave Benson, who's a former superintendent, was offering, I think he had 10 amendments that he'd already offered, so they stopped the discussion.
Interesting thing about one of those, never listening to Ms. Crowe speak, is just all the ideas that come up, and how many of them actually come to fruition, and, you know, there's lots of angst about some of these.
Right.
I think deservedly so, but then they never see the light of day, so...
And I think House Bill 2540, that was just changed with three big amendments this evening. I think that will hopefully be the extent of what they try to do on at-risk. I mean, it is, we oppose the bill, but with the changes, it has greatly improved, and it certainly is not what could be coming at us as far as changes to at-risk.
Any other questions for Ms. Crowe? Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the budget calendar.
That is correct, and so we are excited to hear from both Mr. Minky and Ms. Mansfield.
Yeah. That's probably, yeah. That was the bill they were actually debating when they shut down the committee today. Dave Benson, who's a former superintendent, was offering, I think he had 10 amendments that he'd already offered. So they stopped the discussion.
Interesting thing about one of those, never listening to Ms. Crowe speak is just all the ideas that come up and how many of them actually come to fruition. You know, there's lots of angst about some of these.
Right.
Deservedly so, but then they never see the light of day, so...
And I think House Bill 2540, that was just changed with three big amendments this evening. I think that will hopefully be the extent of what they try to do on at-risk. I mean, it is, we oppose the bill, but with the changes, it is greatly improved. And it certainly is not what could be coming at us as far as changes to at-risk.
Any other questions, Ms. Crowe? Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is a budget calendar.
That is correct. And so we are excited to hear from both Mr. Minky and Ms. Mansfield.
Good evening. We're going to look at a few slides. I've got a lot to say about at-risk and I'm going to show you. And we need high-density at-risk to be permanent and continuous, not three years.
I know.
I'll show you why. The budget, we're getting ready to start working on the budget. It's an eight or nine-month process and I hope the next five minutes gives you an idea why, what we're dealing with. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mansfield to give you the nuts and bolts of the dates of what we'll be shooting for to get a certified budget for FY '20. But I think what's helpful is to understand, in terms of understanding our budget, where it comes from and what does it do? Where's the money come from and what does it do? And there's a series of slides here. The first couple of slides is all budget. So it's all, we're all in, all revenue, all state, all federal, all of our dollars. And that in total is about $305 million. You back out transfers and we're net expenditures in the $285, $290 million range. You can see that a big, big portion of that is state aid. And I can assure you that those fund transfers, that 20%, that $60.4 million also is state and local driven. That's general fund and LOB that we drive into our special revenue funds like at-risk, like four-year-old at-risk, like special ed, like CTE. They don't exist outside of us driving money out of our general fund and our LOB, those programs. Okay, you've got some local tax dollars. Again, that's part of our mill levy. The biggest chunk of that, $13 million of that $20 million is the LOB. Have some capital outlay in there, that's about 20% is $4.2 million. Bond and interest, about $3.3 million. And then our special liability fund that we use to defend ourselves in litigations, about $150,001%. When you see that carryover, $34.2 million, 12%. School districts get beat up for that a little bit. And I'm going to show you why carryover is important in particularly our special revenue funds because that carryover really is part of your next year's budget. And that's what makes that tick. So that's the revenue. That's where it comes from. Big chunk of that is state and local dollars. About $25 million of that is federal money. And then we have some local revenue, some interest in the other. If you go to the next slide, let's go back to, not that one, but let's just scroll down on, let's go back to the pie charts. Scroll down. Where's it go? And we've broken this down into objects and functions. Objects are just what do we buy? What is in the function? What's its purpose? All-in here, 41% salaries, 16% benefits and taxes, so it's 57%. But I promise you salary benefits higher than that because again, there's that fund transfer, same amount, $60 million. Going to show you where that's at. That ends up in funds where it's 80, 90% salary benefits, okay? Next slide. Function. Again, that fund transfer shows up, $60 million out of the general and LOB. 41% salaries, 16%. Yep, let's go back. Instruction. 36% instruction, 6% student support, 1% general admin, 4% school admin, 2% transportation. And you can read food service, about 3%. So where the money goes. Again, though, I want to point out that that fund transfers, those $60 million, you're going to see that they're going to be in instruction because those transfers get driven into at-risk, special ed, career tech ed, bilingual. And the lion's share of those expenses are staff, okay? General fund. So outside of the all-revenue, the next few slides are really going to talk about general fund, LOB, and the really big special revenue or programs, okay? So the general fund, where's that revenue come from? 55% of that is state. FTE is headcount, okay? And we're going to talk about headcount, why that's important. That's foundation aid, 55%. Working counterclockwise, state aid, low and high enrollment. If you're a district that has over 1,622, I think, something like that, kids, you get a little bump, that's 2%. We've got 1% waiting for bilingual, about 1% waiting for career tech ed. And really pay attention to the next two sections. State at-risk, about $18.6 million. That's 18% of our general fund state aid waiting. For, as Ms. Crowe mentioned, state high-density at-risk, needs $4 million to be the public schools. This is why I'm saying it's important that that's permanent and continuous. And I've got some other thoughts on that for you. State aid, transportation, about 1%. Special education, about 17% of our state aid. That 17% has to get transferred directly to the special ed fund along with a whole bunch of other money out of the LOB and the general fund. What do we spend the general fund on? This is going to be really consistent. You're going to hear this again and again and again here for a little bit. Salary benefits, about 53%. 33% of our general fund gets transferred out into the special revenue funds. I can promise you that that 33% ends up in salary benefits, just in another fund. At-risk, special ed, career tech ed, bilingual. Some professional technical services, some property services, transportation, supplies, energy. But again, just wanted to share with you the lion's share of those expenditures, right? We're people business. And I've said that from this podium before, we're people business. By function, instruction, student support, instructional support, general administrations, 2% of that general fund budget. School admin, that's our principals, 9%. Operations and maintenance, 10%. Transportation, 4%. And just an interesting side note, I was just kind of peeking at the most recent KASB newsletter today and Mark Townman put out a statewide actual pie chart. I think he copied off of me, actually. And it's really interesting how consistent school districts are across the state. If you look at his numbers in terms of what do schools spend their money on, it's pretty consistent, right? We all buy the same stuff. Supplemental general fund. It's our next largest supplier of revenue. Where's that money come from? State aid, 21.9%. That's 63% of our LOB comes from state aid. The other comes from local taxes, our mill levy that we levy here locally. We, you can levy up to 33% of your general fund in your LOB for additional revenue. We are fully leveraged. We are at 33% and intend to stay there as long as we can manage our mill levies. Bond issue, refinancing is going to help with that. But that LOB is state aid, local taxes. What do we, where do we spend all that money? $30, $33 million. 74% of that LOB gets driven out of the LOB into our special revenue funds. At-risk, special ed, career tech ed, bilingual. We do have some salaries over there, some operations maintenance, some IT salaries. We pay our property liability insurance, about a million dollars out of that LOB. And then we have some energy costs. But lion's share of that LOB gets driven to our special revenue, our program funds, feeds our program funds. That make sense? Am I making any sense at all? I hope. Again, by function, fund transfer, transfers, instruction, general administration, school administration, 7% operations maintenance, property liability insurance. It's what we do with it. Where does it go? The next slide is going to show you at-risk, okay? Where's the money come from for at-risk? 87% of that money is driven out of the general fund and the LOB. This is where it lands. That very first slide, all-in revenue, the fund carryovers. $3.7 million of that was in the at-risk, okay? But if you spend your entire pie this year and you intend to spend your entire pie again next year, what's that mean if you don't have any carryover? That means you've got to find it in the general fund and the LOB the following year, right? You've got to drive more money out of those two if there isn't any starting money. So we get beat up for carryover balances. But it is critical that we manage them well. And I think there's a, there's a level. I mean, obviously, you wouldn't want 80% of your, you know, if you had 80% of your dollars in carryover, you're probably not utilizing that money well within the fund. But I think this really demonstrates, and I think you're seeing special ed the same thing, that the expenditures are well managed. What does at-risk buy? What does all that money buy? People. Salary and benefits in the at-risk fund is 99% people. 1% professional technical services. So I can't emphasize enough from the finance side how important at-risk funding is. So I understand our legislators are looking for explanations from school districts in terms of what are you doing to assist the at-risk kid? But I'm a simple person. And for me, I understand our business is kids. Kids come to school to learn. You learn with instruction. It takes instructors to provide instruction. I don't know any magic module, software that we can plug into an at-risk kid. So that is a difficult question. But I would suggest that the language in any ending legislation be very clear that this money can be used for instruction, for people, for teachers, for parents. I think it's critical. At-risk by function, 98% is instruction, 2% is admin. We've got two buildings that are completely funded by at-risk. That's our Hope Street Academy and our Avenue West Alternative School. We have to have some administration there for one of those buildings. 98% of those dollars go into instruction, teachers, parents, it's in the classroom. Special ed budget, how's it funded? Fund transfer, 71%, a 14% carryover balance and some $5.8 million of Title 6B money. This is a fund that is, even though our overall student population is declining, and we'll talk about that a little bit, this is an area where we're actually, the kids we have, this is the one area that tends to grow every year. What does those special ed dollars get spent on? Salary and benefits. Significant amount of transportation in that fund. We do transport kids. We have kids that go every day over our Kansas School of Deaf and Blind, an everyday route. Those are expensive runs. But again, the majority of those professional technical services are certified staff, parents helping these kids in classrooms. Function is going to be instruction, student support. And this is a program that's a third of what we do in terms of delivering special ed services. And we do that with, and this really stood out to me. We do that with a 2% administrative cost. I'll argue every day that's pretty efficient. Bilingual, where's the revenue come from? General fund, LOB. We manage our carryovers and then we spend it on salary benefits. Transportation. Function's going to look, a whole bunch of instruction. Student support, some transportation, 1% school, 1% administrative costs in that program. That's, that program's ran pretty well from a fiscal standpoint. Career post-secondary, again, fund transfers. We had to carry over balances and we did that on purpose moving out of '18, '19. We knew T-CAC was open. Being open, we knew programmatically those programs were going to expand. So we knew our revenue needed to expand. Coming out of FY '18 into FY '19, I know we had about 38, 38% more expenditures in that career tech ed. We knew that was going to happen. What happens in tech ed? How do we spend it? You guessed it, salary benefits, some professional technical services and property services, a little bit of transportation, and we've got to have lights and decaf, lights and gas. That's important. Function is going to begin, instruction, student support, some school admin, 12% operation maintenance. The other program I think that's really important and the district over the last five, six years has placed a lot of emphasis in this area is early childhood. And it's been a program that's grown. It's across all schools in the district. And we have, and the board has provided additional resources every year for these programs because we do think it's important. Where's the money come from? 53% of that revenue is federal revenue. About 13% state aid. 12% for this FY '20 was in our carryover. We have 12% fund transfers. We have some revenue from tuition, some other things. The biggest portion of that federal revenue is our Head Start program, Sheldon Head Start. It's going to be the lion's share of that revenue. And then in terms of early childhood expenses, salary benefits, salary 66%, benefit taxes 17%. We buy some professional technical services, 1%, a little bit of transportation and other services. We provide supplies and energy in our classrooms. But again, we're an education company, okay? And again, by function, instruction, student support, some school admin. That little sliver of food, $257,000. There's a lunch program at Sheldon Head Start and it is a federal program. That is kind of where the dollars come from, where they go. And building into the FY '20, '21 budget. So with state aid, audited FTE is important because that is the, that is the stuff foundation state aid is made of. And that revenue, general fund revenue, if you remember, that was about 57% foundation aid of the general revenue pie. So we get paid base state aid per student times number of kids, audited number of kids. audited number of kids. Without weightings, you can see September 20, 2016, September 20, 2017, September 20, 2018, September 20, 2019. And then our most recent projections out of demographics for September 20, 2020, projecting down about another 200 students, So you see by next September, if we back up five years, we're going to be down about 1,000 kids. And I'm going to show you what that impact looks like. And we're very thankful of increasing state aid. We really are. But it does have an impact. If we roll these numbers out, 2020, 2021, 2022, 23, if you look at the blue, that would be projected state aid, foundation state aid. The orange represents what state aid would look like or the additional state aid we would receive. It's kind of opportunity cost if we just would have maintained our September 20, 2016 counts, if we were bringing in as many kindergartners as we were graduating, right? That's reflective of that. The base state aid per student last year was 4,165. This year's 4,436, projected to go to 4,569 in 2021, 4,706 in 2022, and 48, 46 in 2023. So declining enrollment is certainly softened with increased base state aid per kid. We do appreciate that. But there is some opportunity lost there. And as much as I know our state intends to keep those promises of base state aid, there is a history. And base state aid can be at, you know, 42, 96, and at mid-year go backwards. So as much as we know those are very good promises, they're not guarantees. So with declining enrollment and increasing base state aid, it's difficult but manageable. If we have declining enrollment and decreasing state aid, that becomes a whole different problem. This is why we start thinking about the budget in January and February. I think I'm going to let Shonette. Yeah, I just, I don't want you to think I make this stuff up. I pulled this out of the Kansas Department of Ed. So I thought I'd throw up a slide that said KSDE on it just to lend a little legitimacy to what I say, a little credence. I teased Elar today. I said, golly, on their FTE, the very top there, they're going to need to come up with a new chart for us in 2023 because we wouldn't be on that one if our FTE doesn't make some improvements. So I think I'm going to let Shonette go ahead. Unless somebody has any questions for me, go ahead.
Mr. President. Gary, would you send that slideshow to us?
I will, absolutely, I will. And it's something, if the board would like and leadership, it's certainly something we could certainly put on the website under the budget portion as well. But yes, I'd love to share it with you.
Yeah, I have to give a lecture about what board members do, and this would be very, I would, of course, use all the slides. It'd be very helpful.
I totally understand. So I'm going to let Shonette talk a little bit about, and we are winding down. Scott threw up. These are our audited numbers. Again, just let you know, I don't make this stuff up. So as March Madness is rolling up on us, we too start March Madness. And our madness is the march to Legal Max, adjusting our budgets to what our audit was. So you know that the audit, in terms of foundation state aid, you can use this year's count, or you can use the previous two, whichever's highest. Or if that isn't great, you can use an average of three years, okay? The weightings, the weightings for at risk, special ed, CTE are always based on current year numbers. But foundation aid can be this year's count or the previous two.
Mr. Menke, before you leave the podium, I wanted to ask, for bilingual funding, when we say bilingual, does this mean students who need extra support services because of their limited English proficiency? Okay, and so is it still determined by minutes? An ESL nurse teacher providing the services?
Yeah, you can take the higher of the two, head count or contact hours. So, yeah. And that's the same with career tech ed. They'll give you the highest of your head count or actual contact hours. And I believe our head count is most beneficial for us. And it's in that document. I'd love to share that with you if you want to come down and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Yep. That drives that. The last thing I am going to say, KSDE. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moonia. Go ahead.
You know, we mentioned having those slides available for us to be able to sort of take that in and understand it.
Yes, sir.
Every time you explain it, I learn something. My general sense as well is that this is such a complicated issue. And one of the issues, problems, I think, is the general public has, doesn't understand it. And we have to figure out a way to how to communicate everything you just told us in a way that's easy to digest, not only for ourselves but for everybody involved. And so that might be my challenge is how do we communicate our budget and the importance of every dollar we receive and its impact on students? That's, you know, necessarily have to come up with an answer, but I think it's something for us to consider is, you understand this better than anybody else. And I can sense a, you know, alarmed about what's going on at the legislature, its impact on every student. And I think it's our job to figure out how do we effectively communicate just how important every dollar is to, for individuals to know, you know, just that every dollar is stretched and maximized as much as possible. Might be a challenge for us to figure out how do we do that?
KSDE is sending blasts. And I would just, all of our schools should be talking about the census. And again, giving a plug from a finance guy's side, why is the census important? Because it will ultimately determine a lot of things, where federal dollars land. And in the KSDE fact sheet, what other federal dollars are represented, seven of the 12 Topeka Public Schools receives. Title programs, individuals with disabilities, IDEA money, TIPR assistance, TANF for families, National School Lunch Program, Head Start, Child Care and Development block grants. Our 25, 26 million, I showed you 8, 9%, right? Is a whole bunch of that. So I would just encourage our families within the district, fill out the data. It's important. It is important. And I know the climate politically, you know, could be difficult for some people to think that that's a good thing to do. But just encouraging, because it is important from a financial standpoint for an entity like Topeka Schools. I'm going to be quiet now.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to go over the proposed budget process for this year, '21. There are 24 different bullets on the list. Okay. We've already started. This process starts in December. It's a joint team effort. IT, I guess, the ball rolling along with HR and setting up our payroll calendars. And those calendars are linked to staff, staffing. So that helps with building the budget software that we use to create the budget program.
There it is, okay. I was just going to pause you for a moment and let everybody know that's on our agenda that you're looking for, so.
Yeah. So like I said, we've already started in December. I'll go over each and every exciting bullet. But we're already, we're kind of ahead this year. With the help of IT, they kind of helped us with some data entry that we normally do. We normally put in thousands and thousands of lines of data entry. But with help of IT, they kind of helped with that process. And this year, we're editing changes. We send out budget worksheets to all of the budget managers within the district. And it is a process where, you know, everyone has a say in creating what the budget will be. And we receive those budget worksheets back with suggestions on, you know, changes. And we edit the changes in terms. That takes a significant amount of time to do that. While we're doing that, we also need input as far as FTEs because that is what drives our revenue for the budget so that we can, you know, make sure we stay within our budget when we are determining what the budget will be. February 28th is pretty important. I try to get a lot of things done by end of February. And like I said, we're looking pretty good as far as that goes. We've already sent out the budget calendars to the different budget managers. And right now, I guess, we would be kind of at the end. I'm waiting to get the budget worksheets returned from staff. And this is pretty early. Give staff plenty of time to get those back to us. Once we've entered that information, and I will go through and prepare different summaries. I'll go over funds, different budgets within our entire budget to make sure we're closely looking at everything and reviewing every step along the way. It's not really complete. We have to wait for negotiations to happen. As far as I know right now, I'm not real sure how that, because it hasn't happened yet. It happens in June. A lot of things happen at the very tail end of June. June is a very, very busy month for us. Not only do we complete negotiations, we have to make sure that, you know, the current year budget has been reviewed and looked at. Because once we get the software from the state, not only do we have to, you know, create the budget for next year, it includes two prior years. And so the first prior, I guess, the second prior year would be 2019, yes, in this current year. And so that's really just copying data from the prior budget program. But FY '20, we're still in FY '20 right now. And we have to actually wait until the end of June before we can, you know, even start that process because we could have expenses on June 30th. So to wait till the end of the fiscal year to do that. And not only that, but we can't really start until we get the software from the state. So that sometimes holds us up because we don't get the software till very late. And last year actually was one of the best years where we received that software pretty early. So we're hoping that happens again. So there are critical dates on this calendar. You see, there's a lot of dates that just say May, June because it's pretty flexible and fluent. We know that by the end of June, we will have all of the expenses for the current year budget. But we will need to wait for any last minute changes that come through the state before we start in creating the next year's budget and making sure that we consider everything, consider any changes from leadership. It's a pretty fun process actually after we get all the information and make everything fit within, you know, our revenue, projected revenue that we project that we will receive based on FTEs. So we get to the point where you guys are very, very important in this process. You're an important piece in helping us create the budget and approving the budget. Once we get through and we get the software from the state and we finish all of our work, our magic, trying to get everything pieced together within our budget, I will come back to you, to the board. And we will present, well, actually, before we do that, we will show you kind of what the highlights of the budget will be for FY '21. And once we've actually put everything in the software, we'll come back to you with our approved budget product. Before we do that, we review it with the state, KSDE, and get any suggestions from them and kind of get their blessing before we present it to you. Once we present it to you, though, we also will ask at that time for the public hearing. There has to be 10 days between the hearing and the approval of the budget. So that is something that you all are very important in helping us accomplish. And the date that I have set here for us to make that recommendation to use August the 6th. And then at that time, we'll ask for the public hearing. And that will be published in the Capital Journal. And after that, once we come to the second meeting in August, hopefully, we'll get the approval of the budget and hold the actual public hearing. And the day after that, it's still not finished. I have to go back to the county. And we have to file a copy of the approved budget with the county. It's a pretty fun process. Like I said, we've just got started. But I'm so excited this year because I've had so much help with IT that I'm looking forward to a lot more time of looking at projections, making changes, and just fine tuning the actual finished product. I hope I haven't bored you with all this budget business. But if you have any questions about our proposed calendar or any suggestions, I'd be happy to take your questions or suggestions.
Any questions for Mr. Menke here, Mr. Mansfield?
Just a comment, thank you. You both seem very organized and on top of it. And I feel very grateful.
Thank you.
I also say that I know, after being on the Finance Council, I already know what you guys go through. It's very appreciative.
We appreciate that. Just to your earlier comment, I will mention, because Shonette didn't, I kind of work globally in the budget and managing department. But everything I showed you, all funds, the general fund, the thing that Shonette has to do, we have 40-plus buildings, those dollars get budgeted in about 30,000 line items. So it is a process. It is a process. So we take that $300 million and blast it into, you know, 30,000 plus accounting persons.
I would just echo Mr. Moonia's request. And we traded an email not too long ago about the same. I've been here for eight years and I still sort of am mystified by monetary issues. So I think, you know, budget for dummies for me and, you know, it would be helpful just to top line 40,000 where our money comes from, how do we spend it?
Are we getting close with the pie charts? I mean, or sort of let out, do something new?
No, you're not getting close, in my mind. I need a simpler.
A simpler?
I'm not a money guy, so I just need a very simple elevator. Where's our money come from? Where does it go? And, you know... And, you know, that's kind of it, really.
And if I may suggest, you know, one year for the legislators, we gave them a really simple piece from communications about like how much each teacher contributed back to the community. You know, every teacher that we hired contributed so much back. And it was a really simple thing to see. And it came from their question, wanting to know how much we recycle revenue. So we can have communications work with finance and have some, you know, slick little, a talking point really, is what you're talking about. We'll have that ready for you at the next board meeting.
Right, just bullet points of, you know, we get asked questions of how do we spend our money? How do our tax laws work?
People.
I'm always amazed at the complexity of school finance. And really, I trust you and your staff to capable do it. And you've done it every year. So kudos to you and your team. You built a team that withstands audits and keeps us in the black. So thank you for all you do. And managing the incredible complexity of this school finance. Thank you for all you do. Next on the agenda are board member comments. Dr. Bonebrake, do you have any comments tonight? Dr. Morrison?
Oh, I got it. I wouldn't want to be without a word. I just need to tell the board what I've been notified about. And the one thing about vaccinations, I think it's very important. And I should just tell you that we have a very good vaccination record. We do that in the District Health Council. She brings that to us, the nurse brings that to us. It's in the upper 90s as far as vaccinations. So I don't think it's a worry for us. But it's something that we should consider for later legislative action, I think, is mandatory. Because we're going to get in a place like California did with measles, outbreaks, and stuff like that. Two, I was at the Intergovernmental Cooperative Council. And I would urge every member of the board, administration, to go and see Brian Lanker's photography at Wolling Art. It's called "I Dream a World." And it's about, I think it's 75, was that it? Yeah, 75 African-American women pictures from Brian Lanker, who won a Pulitzer Prize, interestingly enough, for a birth with the Lamaze method that I made a comment on during the council. Because this woman was smiling and the baby was on her tummy. And that was normal for Dr. Bonebrake and them. But before that, all those women were put to sleep. And so they weren't smiling with that baby on their tummy. The baby goes to the nursery and the husband's in the waiting room. So I would urge you to go. Wolling Art, "I Dream a World," it'll be there until June. Just go in during the day sometime and just look at these 75 African-American women in their poses from a Pulitzer Prize-winning photographer. And that's it.
It's free.
It's free. Just go.
Mr. Munoz?
I've spent the last month attending a couple of different committees as I begin to finance policy and equity. And I think I just would note that I've, administration and staff have been able to help me to sort of get up to speed to where I need to be in order to make the best decisions for kids and for the district. So I'm appreciative of everybody's support. As those of us who are new here, fill in those large shoe prints that we have. We're filling in and get to where we need to be in order for us to make sure we move 501 forward. So thank you all.
Mr. Kimmel?
Yeah, so, you know, today and last night was parent-teacher conferences. And I was reminded yet again why it was so important to me to move to buy a house in 501. So, and you know, I have my daughter in elementary and my son in middle school at both schools. You could, just the professionalism, the positivity, the how informed the teachers were, administration, just how everything was run, was very efficient. And it was great. Brought my kids with me and they were happy to go to school on a day off. So, and I'm also now the proud owner of a bumper sticker that I purchased, Scott Dual Language PTO. And my bumper sticker says, "We are bilingual, somos bilingues." And I think that's really cool. But we've got a bumper sticker in Spanish and in English. So that's it.
Remember when passes and I went to the Finance Committee meeting last week, but had a thorough review of what we discussed. So even at that, I'm thinking about going to the Tugusos Play this weekend. So there's a play, it's tonight or tomorrow, Saturday, at 7 o'clock each evening. And then Sunday afternoon at 2 p.m. It's, I forget the title. It's, I don't think it, the title's on it, but it's mattresses is in the title. I don't remember the full title of "What's Upon a Mattress." So they're always entertaining. If that'll take a motion to adjourn, there's another business. Dr. Morrison makes a motion to adjourn and he's seconded. Dr. Bonebrake, any discussion, seeing none, or is it favor? Or adjourned?